Yes.
Call the committee of the whole meeting for July 12th to order. At 6:30. Disclosure disclosure of community area interest in general nature thereof. There's none. Three deputations and delegations, 3.1 Fire Chief Sean Hearn, update on fleet operations, and he will be attending the exam.
Can you hear us Sean?
Yeah, I can hear you.
And James coming in at the same time?
Yeah.
James.
Yeah, I'm here.
And you can put your videos on if you have them.
Not letting me. Video is not working.
It says the host is disabled.
Sorry, I'll just give you a moment here. Are you able to put your video on now?
Yes.
You're on.
Okay, go ahead. Can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you.
Okay, go ahead Sean.
Okay, I just was gonna cover off the report, I'm assuming everybody's read it. I don't know if you have any questions for James as far as the pump testing goes. I know there was a few questions as far as whether you should test out of a hydrant or out of a lake. Maybe James can touch on that, but just with my report as I discussed with the mutual aid that we're in jeopardy of not being belonging to mutual aid anymore, just because we can't offer a pumper truck to Halleberry or to Coleman Township anymore. And as far as the fire ground operations impact, if you read the report, it's definitely a concern, especially when it comes to one pumper. With fire operations, we can't, we're gonna have a hard time protecting surrounding areas if we get a good fire, or surrounding buildings if we get a good fire. And also, we rely on one truck to start and to pump every day that we take the truck out. And now with the fire ban lifted as well, there's, there's a concern of more, more calls. So, but we're at the status now where there's not much we can do. And also, I'm not sure as far as insurance rates go, how it's gonna affect the taxpayers down the road if this continues.
And is James gonna touch on the question about the testing and pumping from a hydrant?
Yeah, I can, I can explain the test. So basically what happens, the way that fire trucks are tested is they're, it's set off, set out by NFPA, which is the National Fire Protection Agency and underwriters laboratories, Canada. They created a test to test fire trucks annually to make sure that they maintain pumping ability and basically stay in service. So they set up a test and it's done from a draft. You can do it from a hydrant, but you have to test the hydrant and then take into account the hydrant because it's supplying water to the truck. So it wouldn't, if a truck failed the test from draft, it would still fail from a hydrant. There wouldn't be an added bonus from the hydrant because you have to calculate how much water the hydrant's helping the truck. And then you have to calculate that in. There is a way to do it, but all the manufacturers, when they manufacture the truck, they have a pit of water, like a pool, and they draft, which is sucking the water out of the pool, and then spray it, and then they test what it does at the factory, and then it has to meet or exceed that level for the rest of the truck's life. This particular truck, I'll just get right into it. The main thing that, the problem with it is it's an old gas engine. It's a carbureted engine. I don't know if, me personally, I've never even driven a vehicle that is carbureted, but they haven't been around for a very long time. So it's just become tired, there's ethanol in the fuel now, those engines aren't designed to run that, and it's more of a liability than anything, just running it, because you have to run it so hard to meet the test. And even if you run it as hard as that truck will run, it won't even, it won't even get close. I have the test in front of me here this year. It, it needed to get 840 gallons per minute and it got to 800 gallons per minute. I have the test from last year, it just got to the 840 gallons per minute, but it did not pass the 250 PSI test where it needs to pump 50% of its capacity at 250 PSI, and it failed that last year. And even, I remember testing this truck for years and it was just meeting the requirements previous years. My own personal insurance company came to me last year and looked over my documents and basically said these trucks that I've been certifying that are over 30 years old into the 40 years old, it was just, it's a liability for them, it's a liability for me, so I could imagine that it's a liability for the town itself. I can still test them, I just have to put a caveat in the test that this truck does not meet NFPA standard at 1911. So, any other questions?
Does anybody have any questions for James and Sean?
I just had a question on the liability, but he touched on that already.
Okay, that's our good information.
Can we say we just have to get creative and trying to find some more funding for them?
Okay.
Absolute necessity.
Could I just ask what the final recommendation is to council then?
Mine personally, or chief?
Yeah, that'd be great. Well, both of you really.
Um, there's a lot of, I deal with a lot of departments that are in the exact same boat. There's a lot of towns out there that don't use their fire trucks too often, and they struggle to find the money to keep the fire department up. There's a lot of used vehicles out there that, so NFPA states 15 years for like a big city to use their trucks frontline, and then for five years, use them reserve. And a lot of these fire departments, they'll just, after 20 years, they get rid of the truck regardless. So even though the truck has been used for 20 years, it gets put on gov deals or gets sold privately. And it can be picked up for relatively cheap and it's still a good, good running truck. If you get one that doesn't have the diesel exhaust fluid and things like that in it, they can run for a very long time. And that's what I kind of recommend to departments is just keep an eye out for those used trucks that come from a city that haven't been run. And, and then they can use them for at least probably 10 years. I'd say 30 years would be when you should start looking at replacing a fire truck. But that being said, even in the NFPA, it says as long as it's passing its tests and, and someone certified is looking it over, there isn't really a date on it. That being said, 35 years is, is kind of the line where they really start to fall apart and have issues. So my recommendation would be find a, a good used truck. And, and that should do you for at least 10 years.
Okay. Anybody else?
I just wondered what Sean was, recommendation might be.
Yeah, I was actually looking at the same thing because they're, right now, our frontline pumper now was 29 going on 30 years old, just to get back into having two, two fire trucks to, to be able to protect the town and, and save us from a lot of liabilities is look for a u, a good used truck and then maybe commit to trying to look at a new truck, you know, in the next couple of years. That would be my recommendation, but.
Thank you.
The benefit of the town of Cobalt is, is the hydrants are really good, you do have a good water system, there's not too much rule, so you can get away with a smaller pump. Because you can take advantage of that hydrant pressure to, to supply, so you don't have to get this great big pump in the trucks. So even, even a smaller, like this, this, hang on, this was an 840 gallons per minute, even a 500 gallon per minute truck you could get away with. It would be your insurance company that would dictate what type of pumper you need. So I'm not, I'm not sure what, what they would recommend, but they kind of dictate what size pump you need and things like that. So, but with hydrants, you don't need a great big truck. You can, you can get away with a smaller, smaller truck depending on whether they let you do that or not.
Council Cooper?
So in the event that that pumper two doesn't start, what do we do then?
We would probably have to call mutual aid and hope that they, hope that they attend because.
You wouldn't send the old pumper one in to, to look after it, even though it still runs?
No, not at all. I wouldn't risk the firefighters' lives or anybody else, put them in jeopardy for, for something that failed.
Perfect. Somebody's keeping an eye on gov deals, they take it?
Uh, yes, Sean has, we.
Cause there's one there right now that's actually a good price until.
Yeah. If there's another. Come up with money for it right away. It's.
Without discussing price here, we can afford.
Would, would I be able to say something?
Yeah.
Sorry, I just, probably Doug would remember, at the end of last year, we had issues where both trucks failed, we were managed to, I can't remember what the cost was to fix the number two truck to get it back to, to get it serviced. I know James had to come back and retest. And we went to council and council had set aside $50,000 towards the, towards looking at other truck. But unfortunately, on gov deals, some of the, the better trucks are getting, they're getting bought up by manufacturer, other companies and reselling them. They do a little bit to them and they resell them for 30 or $40,000 more. So it makes it a little tougher to purchase it when we, you know, when we have a guideline of $50,000 or whatever. So we would almost have to have a set, a set amount that we could, we could spend up to, so, so we would know where we sit.
What's your experience, what would be a reasonable amount?
Well, I've seen some go for 65, some go for 80. Usually about 80 is about the highest they'll go. And we also keep in mind that we, we do have $20,000 that we've, we've raised already to, to set aside for a truck, so.
Yeah, we're good in there.
So, so do we actually need two trucks then? Since it sounds like one is like about a year away and one is not passing, so we need to really.
Well, I would, I would definitely shoot for the one right now. And, and so we, at least we have two trucks, as long as, as James indicated, as long as it, it passed the pump test, they're fine. But it's just something that, you know, if we, if we pick up a vehicle within the 22 years, and at least we'd have two, two vehicles, and then we can start looking at replacing the 30 year old truck down the road.
It's gotta be done.
Council Starchuck?
Yeah, I was just curious, what the trucks they do have, is there any resale value in them at all, like collector wanna buy them, give us more cashed, I guess as an antique? Just.
As if James is on, I think James can touch more on that. He's had some experience with, with the older trucks. I'm not sure what we would actually get for our, our 74.
Yeah, that truck would probably be one of the higher valued collector trucks, I would say, just when it comes to, let me just see here, that is. Yeah, so that's a Pierreville. So it's a, for a collector, that'd be kind of a rarer truck. I would say you'd probably get top dollar, top dollar would probably be like $10,000 for that particular truck. So that would be the way to go. I don't know what, how the market is right now on collecting fire trucks. I know there's certain shows and things that I used to be kind of in with, but I haven't really been with it for a while. But I know that truck, it's, it's in really good shape for a collector, for kind of a, you know, it's got a new paint job and everything like that, so it, it looks good. So I think that would be the way to go if you were to, looking to get some money out of it, for sure.
Thanks.
That would be good.
Okay, anything else Sean?
No, I think that's it.
Okay, well, thank you very much, and thank you James.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you for all of this.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, item number four, adoption of meeting agenda, draft motion, be it resolved at council approve the agenda of the committee of the whole meeting dated July 12th, 2023 as presented, need a mover and a secondary. Counselor Anderson, Counselor Wilcox, discussion, I'd like to start off the discussion. Would like to amend the agenda to add 9.8 under new business, and I have a motion after this motion to waive procedural bylaw. It's in regards to signing authority. Okay, any other discussion? On the approval of the agenda, no? Okay, all in favor? Harry? Okay, so the motion to amend the agenda. Sorry. Be it resolved that council suspend procedural bylaw to allow motions to be introduced regarding the bank signatures. And second, Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Starchuck. And Counselor Anderson. Four?
Yeah, pardon. Sorry. Just reading notes.
Counselor Cooper. Counselor Hughes. Counselor Hunter. Counselor Starchuck. Counselor Wilcox.
Absolutely in agreement.
Okay, and the motion is passed. Mayor Anderson for. Five, 5.1, Public Works, junior report. Every, anybody have any questions for Aaron? I'll just let Aaron get to the table.
We, we know how much water we were losing with repair on Prospect Avenue.
So Aqua reported to me approximately 300 to 400 cubic meters a day we have saved since fixing that leak had been going on for quite some time. We were only made aware of it recently. So that's big savings there.
Yeah, no kidding, I think our production cost, and that's what a buck and a quarter is, and not, so we're about $400 a day in savings there. If you do the math at a buck and a quarter cubic meter, which is 300,000 liters a day. We also have a leak on, no, I believe, when Zach had.
We're, I'm trying to organize contractors, I have that short staff right now, we're gonna do it as soon as we can.
Should we not have done that when we did the other one?
So.
Not to throw you under the bus or nothing, but the excavator was here, the contractor was here.
Seven o'clock that night, I wasn't gonna start another job at seven.
Oh, no, you don't start on the same day, but day later, two days later, whatever, same week.
We didn't start that week, we weren't available, the excavator wasn't available.
Point of where, and he's answered the question that as soon as they get the resources, the short manpower.
I also, I'm sorry, I also have to, pole support, so there was more than just the excavator, I need the pole hold from Cody's poles, I had to arrange quite a bit.
Okay, okay, and under capital projects, I see that we're awaiting on bids for the downstairs thing. We, we haven't got a design on that yet. Why are we open bids, this should have been advertised. Like everything else should be.
Directed to go.
Yeah, I realize you're getting directed, who's doing?
That's a question that you can bring to the staff in the office, or we can bring it up on the next agenda. This is just about the public parks.
I'm just gonna stop questioning them because I keep them sidelined. Yeah.
You don't have summer students this year.
Yeah.
So how is that going?
It's difficult because, you know, summer's tough already because guys are on holidays, so pretty much shorthanded. You know, throughout the whole summer, so I don't have a lot of spare, you know, to, to cut grass, to brush, you know, things like that are suffering this year. So it's tough.
And I guess we don't have a budget then for when people are on holidays to replace them, kind of like in the winter, we hire an extra person. So maybe we should consider getting students back.
Yeah, I recommend it for sure.
I think this year, part of the struggle was the government doesn't allow any funding for municipalities for our summer students. They pulled it. Yeah.
Can we get a report on the Tousing Health Unit, they completed inspection in here of the kitchen? Can we get a copy of that report? Okay, excellent.
Just to follow up to Harry's earlier question, and Aaron, you'd mentioned, our, our guys are short staffed right now and difficult to find contractors. Where are our guys licenses at? Are they, have they been renewed? Can we still count on them as being available in the future?
For distribution purposes?
Yes.
They will have their, they're, they're all licensed for it now for distribution, and they will continue to be licensed for distribution. Those are the licenses I was drafted to renew. We'll only be dropping treatment licenses. So to work in a distribution, we're licensed for that.
So licenses have been, are being renewed then?
As they are expiring, I'm renewing them.
Yeah, I'm just concerned because water breaks have always been an issue that the town dealt with as soon as they were discovered. For the obvious reasons, you know, not just the cost, which is significant, but health concerns and other things too.
Yeah, I'm still licensed, so I'm on site for every excavation.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Aaron. Did everybody read the report? And does anybody have any questions that need to be forwarded to our animal bylaws? 5.3 by law enforcement, new report. Everybody read that report? And 5.4, public library? No questions?
And I don't remember seeing it.
Was submitted?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I can, I can speak a bit about it today, just with a quick update.
Okay, go ahead Counselor.
Yep, Cobalt Library hired three summer students. Kendra's been in the first two weeks of July, she's been in everyday training. Live, everything's working quite well with these three, very enthusiastic, and looks like they're gonna figure it out pretty good. Library will be open every day except Mondays, starting I think this week, next week. She's, and then Kendra's going to be off till September. She's gonna come in one, one day a week, do some paperwork, financial paperwork and things, and if there's anything they need down or help with, she's gonna do that. So we've granted her the rest of the, that, that light schedule to September, and then September will, we should be back full time, we'll see what's going on. But we got the three students now, so.
And still library will still be open every day when she's off?
Yes, yes, that's the idea, that we're training these between Melissa and the three students, we should have the doors open every day. I'm not sure the exact hours, official hours yet, but Monday will be closed for housekeeping and moving things around and cleaning up, dusting and all those other things.
I just want, does that include weekends, Gary?
Yes, yes. It'll be like a six week. Oh, I'm not sure the exact final hours. So that's just kind of being figured out now.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for both libraries? Okay, draft motion, be it resolved, council accept the staff reports as presented, can I get a mover in a secondary? Counselor Starchuck, Counselor Wilcox. I should have asked any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Harry? Item six, items for council consideration, 6.1, Jay Diamond, municipal planning consultants, recommendation, holding off the official plan submitted to the province in April 2022. Any direction for?
I'm wondering if, well, I guess all of us may get a copy of that, I think the newcomers may not have seen it at all, new members on council, so.
Or direction to send it out to all my counselors?
I think we shall have a look at it, if we're gonna vote for it.
Yep.
Was also with the zoning bylaw that went through last year, so that was hand in hand with this. That was the meetings that Jim Diamond had here. So this has already been submitted, still waiting just for, from the ministry, any comments or anything. So this is just technicality more or less, just to put it through. And then if there are any, like Mr. Diamond said, if there's any comments or anything, we will do any amendments. So.
And we voted it through last administration.
Yeah, the bylaw.
Yeah.
The bylaw has already been passed, but now this is just to adopt the official plan. Therefore, I can have the official plan sent out tomorrow to all of council and possibly, if you'd like to bring it to next Tuesday's regular meeting.
I think everybody enough time to review it?
Yeah, I'd be fine if that.
7.1, item, sorry, seven items for council information, 7.1, Cobalt Historical Society, notice of the new project, new forest handout. And 7.2, Cobalt Historical Society, the thank you letter for the assistance with the arts college, repairs. Draft motion, be it resolved, the council accept the items, council consideration and information as presented, remover in a secondary, Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Anderson. Okay, any discussion on any of those? I think the handout looks wonderful. Okay, so all in favor? Harry? Eight unfinished business, 8.1, ad hoc committee procedural bylaw, Counselor Cooper and Wilcox.
If I may?
You may.
All right, thank you. We've had a meeting with staff, we had a good conversation about each and every thing that we're looking at. I, I did in a moment of grace, assign homework. So we are now looking at the kind of a bylaw we might want that might last a little bit longer than being changed frequently, something that's a little bit easier, a little less wordy. And I think it's well within our grasp to do that, but it's gonna require quite a few more meetings to get everything ironed out. Staff have a number of things that they wanted to see changed. Certainly there are other items that we wanted to see changed, so hopefully it's gonna progress and on, but again, we're just trying to fix up meeting times now.
Wonderful. Yeah, it would be nice if it was a little simpler to read and follow along.
Yes, one I can mention, I mentioned Tousing Shores recently passed their new procedural bylaw, and as far as the document for readability goes, it's magnificent. It's very easy, very, it's straightforward, it seems to be all encompassing, but it reads very well, it's not confusing, and it flows, which is part of my incentive for saying, let's read, look what we're gonna do.
Good work. I look forward to seeing what.
Theirs is written in a lot more positive language than ours is.
Yes.
Ours tells us what we can't do, theirs tells us what they can do.
That's a good.
A lot more positive.
Eight point two, ad hoc committee, Sharp Lake Property, Counselors Cooper, Hunter and Hughes. And I guess you're still waiting.
Still waiting for the member of the public. Yeah, we may ride out there this weekend and have a look if Gary's available. Not probably not this weekend, maybe Sunday night or Monday.
We'll talk.
Okay, you guys can figure that out your date night. Eight point three, ad hoc committee purchasing policy, Counselors Cooper, Anderson and Wilcox.
Same thing. I'd have a few things going on, so we haven't met on that one yet, but it's upcoming quickly. I think it's gonna be quite easy, I think, to deal with that one.
I said after the twentieth, it would be free or, yeah.
Number nine, new business, nine point one variance report, quarter one and quarter two, January one to January thirty of twenty twenty three, there was a staff report. Nine point two draft bylaw number twenty twenty three.
Yep.
Amendment number one to bylaw number twenty twenty dash thirty two municipal tax policy. And there's a staff report in there as requested. My.
With the variance report, was there any questions?
Do we do them all at once? Any questions on the variance report for quarter one and quarter two? Okay, the draft bylaw, the amendment to the bylaw for the municipal tax policy, any questions on the staff report in regards to that?
As what was discussed during the strategic planning, this was one of the items here. Recommended dates for taxing, for taxes, in turn would be February, in turn, April, final August, and again, final October. This spreads it out throughout the year. Which makes it easier.
Makes it easier on the taxpayers and it gives the town more money throughout the year.
Exactly. Like to forward it through, start to give their bylaw, put in bylaw twenty, new one for the changes. Some direction from the council.
So do we want to direct staff to put the bylaw on the next agenda for? Okay, draft bylaw number twenty twenty three, amendment number three to bylaw number twenty twenty one dash thirty two, traffic and parking, staff report, twenty twenty three oh six twenty eight.
Can you speak on that?
Yes.
The traffic report is just to amend the very first one's amendment, section five point seven. Instead of November first, one year to April fifteenth, and next year, it should read November first and one year to May first of the next year. Another one would be for prohibitive parking between the hours of four AM and nine AM from November first to May first, the Urgentite Street to Westerly Limit. And that is actually up by the Fraser as prospect goes up to the bottom of the hill at that point. Next one after that is for time, is a hundred and twenty minutes. In the designated timeline, designated places. And it states there on Prospect Avenue from Argentine to again, the Western Lee Limit.
You're referring to the Western Lee Limited Jameson?
Yeah.
At the, okay, so it's not down at the water plant?
No, 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 Western Lee Limit here would be a good way to say it, would be prospect to Jameson South. Jameson South, because of the streets here in Cobalt, we all know what ends one spot, then continues.
But if we look at it up the hill, then we're including, like if we're saying the Western Lee Limit, then you're including the top of the hill, where the old hilltop was, the church, you know, so on and so forth. So maybe we should write Jameson instead of the Western Lee Limit. Just in that lower section, right?
So it'd be prospect to Jameson South, we'd have to say, because just before that is Jameson North going up between. Yeah, and there is about fifty feet difference there between the two.
So can we change that to Jameson South?
So we'd have to rename it, but Jameson.
And the next one?
The next one after that would be amendment five, request in here was for, by the theater, between the theater and the Silver Mugs, and there is a public parking. Theater staff were wondering if it could be theater staff only there.
Nora parks back there too, Nora's art shop. She uses that parking lot.
Well, if you wanna make it a designated area.
Or just a part of it be designated.
Couple of ways we could look at whatever council's decision is.
Counselor.
I just, I don't think Cobalt has enough parking that we would designate that to just theater parking only or crowd parking.
Can I speak to that? Their concern is, is when they have a show going on, they come with a fairly large truck they need to unload. And if people are parked back there, it limits them being able to get in to their back door to unload. That, that's why the request, yeah.
So could they do something like, I think they may do, movies, movie theaters do, I think they do, where they you put out a rope, so on that day, they would be allowed to rope it off. They could in advance just rope it off. That way it's blocked, but it's so rare.
I never see anything back there parked anywhere, unless there was something at the theater that night, really.
We've public works probably has some wooden barricades that they could put across the entrance on theater days. Show night, whatever.
Right here.
We just have to, we could barricade the, load up the sidewalk because it is private property back there.
If they have a nice rope, like the red rope.
Yeah, the dollar rope, yeah.
Can we have another discussion on the theater maybe?
Yeah.
Some different options?
I do know that also the other municipalities here has no parking during hours of theater operations.
Yeah, that might be a good fix.
Yeah.
So.
Now put some.
Because it's no set time with it, so.
It would help if they combined that with a barrier of some sort, because people may not know when theater operations are, so if they put it up the day before, to make sure that the following day, nobody parked there and then take it out the following day.
So maybe directions from.
Further discussion with the theater?
Okay.
Okay, and.
There was, there was one more amendment, amendment number six here for twenty one. To change the site from north to south, it should say Prospect Avenue South, Silver Street to Jameson Street, not north in the bylaw. Sorry, my mistake here on number, amendment number four, was showing the set fines about the two hour parking limit. That will also correspond with our current fines that we already have. Within column two to three.
One quick question, just, I don't think it's been answered in here, but I have a person ask me, is there any stipulation? I know I asked Erin, he wasn't, he wasn't sure. Anything about parking on Cobalt Hill? Yeah, is there any rules to park on Cobalt Hill there?
Parking Cobalt Street?
Or Cobalt Street, yeah, Cobalt, Cobalt Street, yeah, on the hill there. I know one of, one of the people who were talking, she said she heard that you weren't allowed to park on that street during the winter.
During the winter.
I know the winter, I know the winter. So I said, do we have winter? And she said, no, I heard it was summer. I said, I'll try to look it up, see if I can find something out.
Well, no, because we have the parking block there on the hill.
I know, I know, it's Ruth's place, you know, Ruth is halfway up the hill there. She was concerned, she heard that she may not be on.
Ask, and we asked Ruth to contact the office.
So that'd be the easiest way to get it, and they probably know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
George, I noticed you were gonna do reading a first, second and third time. Could we do it a first and second time at one meeting and a third time at the following? There's change to the thesis, it's always nice to give the public an opportunity to comment, and I'm not sure there's anything here that's dire. And it would give you time to chat this year.
So the first and second are regular meeting and third, a committee of the whole?
Thirty of the next.
Wait another whole month for passing.
First and second would be on the eighteenth of July, and the third reading would be then on August the fourteenth.
Is that direction the council?
So the council on agreement with that?
I'm not sure what was just happening there. We're gonna, we're gonna.
The bylaws for the amendment?
Stretch it over a couple of extra weeks?
Yeah.
And that's awaiting, because why do we want to talk?
To give the public time to review it and give us the staff time to talk to theaters.
Actually, I do actually think that makes sense, since the next meeting's next week, it would just allow a bit more time. Because they're so close together, whereas usually they're two weeks apart.
Everybody okay with giving direction? Direction given? Okay, number nine point four, draft bylaw twenty twenty three, encouragement policy, staff report twenty twenty three oh six twenty nine. Any questions?
We don't have time to review this, eh? Probably gonna take a little bit.
So do you want to do a first, second, and then a final at the next following meeting again?
Yeah.
Okay, ad hoc committee, Sharp Lake Property, we had one applicant. It was George Offmer. For the Sharp Lake Ad Hoc Committee. Everybody in agreement to put him on the ad hoc committee?
Yep, he's, he's not here, let's do that.
Okay, do I read his application out or? So direction, contact George Offmer and let him know he's now on the ad hoc committee for Sharp Lake Property. And that's the other members will be in. And I guess for your view of the property?
Can we, can the other members get his email address or whatever?
Yeah, I have it.
I think it was on his application.
Yeah, I believe it is.
I think so, yeah, there it is, yeah.
Yeah, it's on his application. Okay. And nine point five, Counselor Anderson, geothermal project concept.
I had a Zoom meeting with the principals of this. Graham Gambles came to council many, many years ago, had an idea that, why couldn't we use the water flowing underneath us for geothermal heating and cooling? When he was advancing it at that point, technically, it was not feasible for here with our water temperatures. Couple of years before COVID, came back with university wealth proposal. And the idea here is that the students would be doing drilling and doing all the research to see if it is feasible as part of their thesis. And then they were supposed to come in the next spring to start and COVID came, gone. So they're all back again. There was six, seven of us in the group on the Zoom meeting from University of Well, McGill, myself. Ag Nico is in on the project and solidly behind it. And Story Environmental has offered, they have geochemical tests that they have done before, which will fit into this. The whole idea of it is the first two years, what they'll be doing is drilling, using part of the theater parking lot, because that's the most accessible part for them to, to do their initial drilling to get down and all the tests and everything. First two years, they have all the funding in place. The only thing they require counsel is that we say yes to allowing them to go ahead with this project in town and allowing them some office space, of which we have right there in the business office. That, you know, when they are here in town working, it gives them a place to work. The bonus of this is that in the long run, we will find out yes, no, whether we can do it, and this is the ideal block. And we own most of the buildings on it, so it could be a big cost savings for us. Well, the kids are here, business-wise, you're gonna have to be somewhere, you know, this kind of thing, so. What, what they need is from us is a yes. You don't wanna be in the dark. I've sent along the, the whole slideshow that I've seen twice now with everything explained in it. And you will have this for your coverage for the next meeting to go through and read it all. The second part of the project, year three, is where they will be accessing an open federal funding that can go up to ten million dollars for actually putting everything in in the end. That is fifty cent dollars. Well, I was very quick to remind them that this is Cobalt. And as far as dollars go, unfortunately, even two years or three years down the line, we're not going to have dollar bills to put into this. But they will be going out, if it, if it is feasible and it's working, then they will be going out and I'm sure Nico will be helping and finding other businesses and stuff like that to put money into it. But we don't have to worry about that right now. What we have to do is allow the students to come, do their thesis, get the results, and then two years down the line, we, you know, we look at everything and reevaluate along with them. And the principals will all be here in town the eighth of August, I think. So they're all coming, the main ones that are, are going to be doing all the work with it. They'll be here in the eighth of August, just to take a look at the lay of the land. Ag Nico will be bringing the maps and, you know, so just to move that one more step. But before they can do it, actually start drilling, which probably, I don't know, they even say, that hasn't come to that, but when, before they start, they have to have our, our permission, because we own the land they'll be on to begin with. So I'd like you to take a look at it. It's feasible now, down the line, especially if we can get someone else to pay for it all, it's gonna be cost savings for us. Counselor Hunter?
Even at fifty cent dollars, we spend thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars a year on natural gas, so. And that's what their project is looking at, so I, I think, I'm excited to see their results. And I feel like we would be able to get funding, because we're gonna be spending the money into the future regardless.
Well, we would get the funding through that one fund, and it's an open fund that can be applied for any time and like down the line when that funding's applied for, technically, the funding has to come from the town of Cobalt. The staff will be the one that'll actually write it up, but by that time, when they're writing it up and doing it, they will have put together, you know, the other fifty, all, all that's required, so the money that's required and the other fifty percent guaranteed for it. And I have two or three friends that have gone, you know, in their own properties in different cities, different climates, and done that. And they have found a fifty percent cost savings in their energy for heating and cooling. And they just flip back and forth, summer winters. It's it's a great project, I've been waiting almost twenty years for technology to catch up to our, to the temperature of our waters.
Question?
I just wanted to, they're gonna drill in the middle of the the parking lot or?
Yeah, somewhere down there, that would be, that's the most open spot, so now we have to. Yeah. The parking lot at the theater, okay, that's where they would be doing, they're not putting in shafts, they're putting in drill holes to get down to measure the the water quality, the speed of the water, the temperature of the water. Geochemistry, all the stuff like that, so we will know more. Yeah.
Counselor Wilcox?
If they're coming on August the eighth, would you like to have us voting on that next meeting? So that you have it in hand and to welcome them with a?
It would be nice to, yeah, it would be nice to have some, at least in a an approval that yes, we're, we think it's a good idea and and then after that meeting, we'll we'll know more. Like this is just, we just had the first Zoom meeting last week. And everyone would have liked to have moved ahead faster except vacation, vacation, vacations. It's already been held up, but they, you know, research, even at the sort of book level, wouldn't start until the fall anyway, so. It's probably something that would happen the next spring, because I know when we were talking about it the last time. We talked about it through the summer into the fall and it was gonna be into the spring after the thaw and everything before any actual work would be done.
Yeah, do we have to wait till next meeting or could we vote tonight? I know we don't need to vote this meeting, but.
Well, I have a couple of questions slash concerns. Is this an all or nothing? If we give approval for them to go ahead with first stage, then if three years down the road, are we cemented in for fifty cents on every dollar of funding?
Because that's a separate approval. This is more approval of using using our land right now.
I thought they were gonna do a presentation to council as a whole. Were they not coming to council to do as a delegation, deputation?
Probably not at this point, they're they're just coming, then it, when they're actually coming to town will just be to sort of do a walkthrough of the street, what's here. Get out, you know, sit down with Nico with the maps and everything. It's like a, you know, more pre-research for for planning and everything.
Okay.
And and this is, you know, this is the presentation that they did the last time and and he's, he did that one like in the in the Zoom meeting last week and then I asked, and then they all asked, yes, we want to copy it, so.
Okay, and the business center is gonna be sufficient space for them?
Yeah.
I I think we need to inquire with staff, that's gonna.
Your worship, I noticed it was quite a few slides in the presentation.
Yeah.
And it did show some costs, so that's why I would like to send it out with the agenda with the regular meeting on Friday, have council review it over the weekend and then discussion on Tuesday.
They have, they have all their funding now.
Has not yet been budgeted into our this year's budget, so just wanted to discuss that with council.
Yeah, and they have their funding all in place for doing the whole project for the first two years, so.
Counselor Starchuck?
Yes, I just wanted, is the theater aware of this is gonna happen and here it's a parking lot's gonna be taken away from the hall?
I wonder if we can have all this discussion at the next. Um, I think we, I think we need to have some more discussion at the next meeting when we're gonna bring it on the agenda, because I'm sure there's gonna be some more questions that people are gonna think of as they're going through the presentation and reviewing all the information. It sounds great in theory, it's just sometimes practice doesn't follow theory.
This is just the forewarning that, you know, everything's getting back together again in the hopes that you know, we can make it a reality is.
Yeah, or Gary.
Or sorry, Counselor Hughes.
Start check junior, this is a question, did they give us any details on that, like? Is this a big money saver over just the heat pump and through the air transfer?
Over this? It's about fifty percent, I think.
Cheaper than the heat pump.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, and it'll save, and it saved, you know, saved us the cost about fifty percent. What he's hoping is, his, their dream is that eventually down the road, they they'll be able to take it and and do it for the whole town. He's gonna, he's gonna wake up when he gets here and finds out that you just can't run pipes underground, you know, like they do in other places. No, it'll have to be where there's, you know, where there's the direct access to underground workings and then can go from building to buildings, all areas. That's that's why this next meeting, when they're coming up, is introduced.
Kind of hard to go through bedrock when there's houses.
I know. Gary, a little bit to your question, which really should be, I guess, to the project people, is that our air gets to be minus thirty in the winter, but underground is not. So it will be more efficient than.
They have a, they have a new fluid that goes to minus forty one.
Yeah, it'll still be more efficient because it'll still be.
Our fluid, our fluid is the water that's sitting down right, right below us.
Counselor Starchuck?
Yeah, just, Counselor Anderson, I remember you telling us before that you've been down there to see the stuff underneath. Said you were down at some point many years ago to look at, was under there?
Oh, I've seen out at the south end of town. Under underneath the Miller Street residence there. We had that opened, had that shaft open at one point. And we had the brand new technology that the submersible went down and actually took TV pictures. It'll be here somewhere in our. Yeah, that was back. Eighty eighty-nine ninety.
Can we stick to the project? You guys can discuss that after.
It's part of it. Let's see what they're gonna get at and how it works.
Yeah, we should have all that. There's a lot of it in the presentation slides that are being sent to you that explains how they get it and what they do with it, and what goes on the ground and what goes under the ground.
It's all part of, it's relevant to what we're talking about.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, I misunderstood what you were asking. I I heard cameras and underwater and. Okay, any other questions related to the geothermal project? Uh, nine point seven, mayor's report. Good news, ministry lifted the restricted fire zone ban, so that means our fire ban for residential personal fires has been lifted as of six PM tonight.
Sorry, is there gonna be discussion on that?
Sorry, on which?
What you're saying right now, or is that just an announcement?
No, these are just, it's, we can discuss it.
Considering that we only have the one fire truck and our fire chief had kind of expressed concerns, should we? Are we allowed to, do you just continue a municipal ban, or are you guys planning some parties that you don't want to be ended? Like, should, is that something we should consider?
No, uh, it's a fire ban was lifted as per the fire chief's recommendation.
Okay.
So if he had any concerns about lifting it, I'm sure you would have communicated them, but we can double check with them.
And it's not just Cobalt.
Sure, but in his presentation, he said, oh, we only have one truck and the fire ban's being lifted, so I don't know how that's gonna go. So, I mean, he's.
Just to remind residents that they have to be, they have to adhere to the burning bylaw, so it can't be like a huge bonfire, it's gotta be a small fire.
Yeah, they've got, they've got their.
You can't burn brush.
Proper place.
You can't burn brush, you're burning, you gotta burn firewood, it's it's not just a free for all.
I think we can suspend their permits at any time, though.
If they're not adhering to the burning bylaw?
Yeah, at any time, like if we want to put our own burning ban on, we can.
We can, yes, I think that.
I'd like to see us extend it at least until we get a couple more rainstorms.
We can have some discussions with the fire chief.
Chief heard, but right now it has been lifted.
Okay, um, I'd also like to put a reminder out about contamination of recycling with regular garbage and non-recyclable items. When that happens, it costs me, it's probably more money. And at the end of the day, if it continues or it gets excessive, it could mean an increased cost to the taxpayers and increased tax costs. And also like to remind landlords that they're responsible for their tenants and what they would do with the recycling and their garbage as well. And the only other thing I have on my list is I would very much like to remind people that our speed limit in Cobalt is forty kilometers an hour. I personally am seeing a lot of speeding, especially on Cobalt Street going up the hill. I know everybody's in a hurry to get home from work. There's too many hills, there's too many curves, and to go faster than our speed limit, it puts our residents at risk. It also puts any children and pets, because we all know children and pets will dart out on the road at risk. So people need to bear that in mind when they're thinking that fifty and sixty is okay.
Prospect is real bad as well, I think, towards the water plant, they come in there, I bet some of them are doing seventy, eighty.
For sure.
We have asked the police to kind of keep an eye out, so. Slow down. Please. Okay, and then nine point eight. Does anybody else want to discuss anything else I mentioned there?
I would like to. One of our strategic plannings, the Rock's walk from the school. Well, how would we, would we get the staff to do a report on expenses and grants and things like that, or was that something that I'd have to?
Yeah, contact the.
It would be nice to start that, maybe we get it done by September, right?
Okay. Nine point eight. Is the motion for the signatories. Whereas all financial transactions and banking is required to signatures on behalf of the corporation and whereas corporate account requires a file update. Now therefore be it resolved that council authorized Angela Adsett and Stephen Dally as primary signatory and Pat Anderson and Dale Taylor as alternate signatory. Need a mover and a seconder? Counselor Wilcox and Counselor Hughes? Okay, Counselor Anderson? Counselor Cooper? Counselor Hughes?
Yep.
Counselor Hunter? Counselor Starchuck? And Counselor Wilcox?
Yes.
And Mayor Adsett for all in favor, Gary? Okay, item ten, closed meeting, there is none. Eleven, business rising from closed meeting, there is none. Twelve, adjournment, draft motion, be it resolved that the committee of the whole meeting of council be adjourned at seven thirty-one PM. I need a mover and a seconder, Counselor Wilcox, Counselor Starchuck? All in favor? Gary?